Executive session ran about fifteen minutes long. So, we're running about fifteen, we're starting running about fifteen minutes behind. Anyone have any announcements?
Well, I was, I'm sorry, Mr. Cirillo isn't here, but I would like to say I was delighted to see it.
He'll be here later, by the way.
Is he gonna be here later?
Yeah.
Should I? Well, I wanna, I wanna credit Steve Cirillo, our town treasurer and director of the finance department, and you, Mr. Kleckner, and Ms. Goff, and Mr. Faison, the entire team. The town has once again been issued a AAA bond rating by Moody's. This is so important for us as we do so many of these large projects, and I always explain it to people, it's like, you know, if you're able to go out and get a mortgage at a very favorable rate rather than a much higher rate, the amount you have to pay for your, to get your buildings built is so much better with the AAA bond rating. So, I am thrilled to see this, and I thank everyone for their continued budget discipline, which, which has gotten us this now for quite a number of years.
Yeah, and this is especially important as we have a number of large building projects coming up that we're going to be financing the most, first is the devotion school, which should be coming up, I guess, next year for financing. And then, we have future school projects in the works, so it's, it's important that we keep our bond rating at the most favorable rate. I'll just mention the, the teen center gala, which was quite lovely, and I'm sure raised a lot of money, which is the whole point of it. And that was last Saturday. It was a lovely time. Anyone else have anything?
I just wanted to update the board on, on the progress that the, the River Roads Study Committee, a group that we convened now, I think, two months ago, has made in recent weeks. So, the committee is now up and running, the full group has met, I believe, twice, and various subcommittees are gathering to sort of go through the process and adjudicate, try and figure out what the community wants to see built, what types of uses, how tall the massing on the industrial parcel that runs along Brookline Avenue, at the intersection of Brookline Avenue and, and Washington Street, Route 9. So, know that things are happening, there's been robust participation from the public, and happy to answer any questions that, that any of you have either tonight or in the future as the process unfolds.
Selectman Green?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention that last Wednesday, I attended a conference at the Harvard School of Education, sponsored by the U.S. Attorney's Office, on the topic "School-to-prison pipeline and how to address issues that occur in the schools as well as elsewhere that result in a number of students, particularly students of color, being pushed into a pipeline to jail, basically." One of the things I wanna just mention there is that a speaker at the conference gave a nice shout-out to Brookline, Brookline Police and the schools for the manner in which we intervene with kids at risk to provide advocates for them as well as provide alternatives to the criminal justice system when they do things that kids do, and that, you know, many of us did when we were young, but which, in today's zero-tolerance world, have been criminalized. So, you know, that shout-out to Brookline, I think, should be, you know, known widely because of the work that we've, we're doing, counter to a lot of the problems that are being created in other communities with respect to this issue.
Can I just add to that, that, that some of that intervention comes through the roundtable, that the, the police, the high school guidance counselors, probation officers, and do meeting at, at our courthouse across the street. And one of the reasons that, that, that sort of level of cooperation, which I think has been pretty effective in diverting kids who might otherwise be, get into more serious trouble, is one of the reasons we have fought so hard to keep that courthouse open, and periodically, this arises in the state budget as something, I mean, it's, it's ironic, because if you, if you are successful at, at diverting kids from getting into trouble, you have fewer cases being heard at the courthouse, and then they cite those statistics when they tell us, "Well, we should close this courthouse." So, it's, it's, but, you know, I think it's, it's more cost-effective for the town and the Commonwealth to divert kids and keep them out of that. Because it's, it's, I mean, just, it's certainly costly in terms of their lives, but it's very costly, I think monetarily also, when kids, you know, get, get into more serious troubles, so.
Anything else? Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, Ms. Frauley, just when you're done, just sign up, and we know who you are, so.
We know who are you.
Yep.
Are you talking to me? Hi, Regina Frauley, Taming Member from 16, and the coordinator for the South Brookline Senior Social. I was planning to speak to our program next week, but it turned out we had a bonus, and the bonus is that the Baker School, on Thursday night, the 17th, is the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are doing production of The Lion King. And I would like any seniors in Brookline to give me a call, we have access to forty tickets that will be gratis for seniors. So, give me a call at (617) 469-0052, and I'll arrange to be there enough to pass it out, the tickets, but give me a call. We're such a wonderful program that we're getting calls to give us things, and that's always a good thing. Having said that, the week after that, we're starting our spring socials. And we have, the kickoff will be the cookout provided by the Recreation Department, that's March 25th, I think that is. I apologize for the date and any conflict with people's religious observance. We had originally gone for April 1st, and that wasn't available for this event, so 25th of March will be the cookout. After that, we'll have programs with yoga by the Health Department, excuse me. The Police Department will come and talk about different things going on vis-à-vis elders in the department. We have the Senior Center coming for a program that they're doing that might be of interest to seniors. And who knows what else we'll be doing in our program. And here's the real bonus for those who seem to passionately love yoga. The Health Department is so excited about the senior yoga, and how well it's been received, and people really appreciate it. They are expanding their sponsorship for a total of eight weeks this spring. So, it's, everything we do is free, there's no charge for it, and just give me a call at the (469) 0052, and I'll make sure that there's a hot dog or a hamburger for you, or whatever. It's important, because out of courtesy, we don't want to have them bring more than they, than we need. And so, we, and a lot of our seniors will not be in town. And I do want to add to the previous announcement that the good thing, one of the many good things about seniors is we do not use the police services and the courthouse very much at all. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Frauley.
We've got, we've got some changes.
Okay, so, anyone else wish to speak? Just sign up, and...
Mike Stanley, I put a package for a visit across the street from, from Brookline.
Could you get to the mic, because you're on TV? Over there. Five minutes.
It'll be one minute. Okay. So, I'm Mike Stanley with Transit X, I'm a resident of Alston, across from Brookline, and we're doing a, and I'll be talking to the Transportation Board as well, but we're doing a carbon-free mass transit system. And so, this is to replace cars, buses, trains, and trucks in urban settings. So, think about what you have for the B-line on ComAb, and how that's different than the B-line from Kenmore Square to Boston College. So, now imagine that you can have a green space like you would have in the back bay, but a long route. So, imagine something that you see sort of in the, in the video there, if you can, ultra-lightweight personalized automated vehicles. And so, just wanted to say, I'll, I'll be sort of making a proposal, this is a privately-funded, low-cost mass transit system. And I think Brookline would be, fits the right demographic and the right, so we're talking of Boston, we have letters of support, City of Chelsea has done a letter of interest for the system, and we have letters of support from the, both of the senators, Markey and Warren, as well as Cambridge, Watertown, Belmont, and Arlington. So, I'd like to sort of talk to Brookline, and, and I'll start with the transportation side, but I'm sure at some point...
Yeah, the Transportation Board would be the place to start.
Yes, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Sounds very interesting. Interesting. Okay, so, let's move on to our miscellaneous calendar. The first item is the minutes of March 1st. I have a couple of items, as does Selectman Daley and Green.
I made some edits as well.
All those in favor of the minutes of March 1st as amended, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I'll just mention that Selectman Heller is a bit under the weather, she may be joining us remotely as we move along in our agenda. Next item is the question of approving a change order in the amount of $5,029 for work performed by Shawmit Design and Construction in connection with the devotion school additions and renovations project. Mr. Bennett?
I'll handle this for Tony, he's downstairs at a building commission meeting. This change order is for an as-built field survey by Shawmit Construction of all the floors of the existing 1913 building for devotion. That'll assist in the construction and making sure all the new floors in the new wings match up and everything aligns properly.
Yeah, I will say that, that these are, Shawmit's our construction manager at risk, and they have been working very hard to make sure we don't have unpleasant surprises that lead to large change orders down the road, so I think this is part of that effort.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Therefore, I'll move that we approve change order number two in the amount of $5,029 for work performed by Shawmit Design and Construction in connection with the devotion school additions and renovations project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is the question of authorizing the reprogramming of prior-year CDBG funds from various accounts in the amount of $237,484.90. Had to get that 90 cents in there to the Gateway East project. Mr. Viola?
Good evening, Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. Yes, we respectfully request that the board approve the reprogramming of our prior-year CDBG funds, and the placement of those funds into the Gateway East project fund to, to fund the project's revised design budget. As noted in the memorandum that went along with this request, the transfer of the CDBG funds from closed projects to active projects is actually a pretty common housekeeping practice, and we've done it numerous times over the years. Staff is recommending that all the town's prior-year CDBG funds be consolidated and obligated to an existing CDBG project. That's one, in need of funding, and two, can utilize the funding in a timely manner. With respect to Gateway East, it's a project that I'm sure many of you, or all of you are familiar with. At this point, it certainly has a need for an infusion of funding. As the board knows, we've had a number of coordination meetings with MassDOT over the past year, and we've also had a number of public meetings. And the, during those public meetings, we revisited, revisited the overall design to determine if we were making the, the best case we could for pedestrian and bicycle accommodation. So, we received a lot of helpful comments from the public, we received a lot of helpful comments from the Transportation Board, and we really would like to get back to work in refining the current plan so we can meet our funding year obligations.
So, this is basically the bill for revisiting the design to better accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. While it's, it's been over 200,000 that were, of our own money, or actually, it's federal block rent money, what we're getting out of this is a additional state funding to cover the construction costs of those bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So, it's kind of a good return on investment, plus the state required us to do it, so, but, but, but more important than my flip comment is that this is going to be, I believe, the first separated bike track in Brookline. So, to me, that's very exciting, and it's in an area that's kind of dangerous for bicycles, so it'll be good to have the separation.
So, dovetailing on that, that comment about the, the importance of the cycle tracks, there've been a number of changes in the Gateway East area, most notably, I spoke about this at the beginning of the meeting, the property at 25 Washington Street, right at the intersection of Brookline Avenue and, and Washington Street, Route 9, the use has changed. It is no longer a service station. It's my understanding that the extension of the now-planned cycle tracks was unable to extend that, that one block down to the Riverway, down towards Boston, because of that service station use. I'm wondering if this new contract with VHB is going to position us to potentially extend the, the cycle track that one additional block, should the issues with the current property owner, 25 Washington Street, be worked out?
Absolutely. In the, in, in the July meeting we had with the Transportation Board, that question was posed directly to the designer. We're certainly, VHB's aware of the change in ownership, and it, it sort of represents a, you know, a timely opportunity for the town to, to explore, perhaps getting a right-of-way easement to accommodate. That was one of the areas in the corridor we couldn't, we couldn't accommodate, a protected bicycle lane. It's definitely on their, in their scope of work to, to review those areas and other areas where we could, we could do more than just, you know, striping bicycle lanes, so absolutely.
So, clearly, there's some, some work that still needs to be done with the property owner, there's some legal and technical details that have to be worked out, but it sounds to me as though we're gonna be in a position to potentially move forward, should those issues be, be worked through.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Therefore, I'll move that we authorize the reprogramming of prior-year CDBG funds from the various accounts in the amount of $237,484.90 to the Gateway East project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And related to this is approval of the actual contract, so we can spend the money. So, I'm going to move that we approve and execute a contract amendment, an extension between the town and VHB for engineering services in support of the Gateway East project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Next item is the question of approving and executing an agreement for sublease, an amendment to the prime lease, prime lease extension, a single-family dwelling lease for the property located at 29 Avon Street. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, so, we're requesting approval of this, this lease. It will expire in November of 2016. This is the same family, a trust that has been there for at least the past 15 years. Part of their original lease was for them to do $300,000 worth of improvements to the property. Over that time, Charlie Simmons in his division has verified that this work has been completed. Brian Austin's mother passed away, she no longer lives at the property. As part of this five-year extension, they do have the ability to sublease the property, so that's what we're looking for, is this approval. And again, it'll expire in November 2016, at which time we will put an RFP out to rent this property, property, as we do all of our others.
So, why, why do we own a single-family house?
This is a single, it's part of the Lars Anderson estate, and this portion of the property is actually in Boston. So, in addition to them doing all the improvements, they pay the water, the sewer, and the taxes, which, about $10,000 a year, to the city of Boston.
Okay.
Because, okay.
I had the same reaction, and I tortured Charlie with giving me a, an explanation via email, so, please thank Charlie for being patient with me.
We own about three or four single-family dwellings around town.
Right, okay. So, I will, any other questions or comments? I will therefore move that we approve and execute an agreement for sublease, an amendment to the prime lease, and prime lease extension, and single-family dwelling lease for the property located at 29 Avon Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have a bunch of temporary wine malt and beverage licenses, and I'll note for the record that the Police Department has reviewed them all, and sees no reason to deny them. I'll take a motion, an omnibus motion for the whole bunch of them, this is going to be a fair amount of reading.
So moved.
So, I'll, I'll just list the, well, it's a, I'll go through it. Wine malt and beverage license, the Olive Connection, in connection with the following events, to be held at 1426 Beacon Street. A Spanish cuisine tasting, March 10th, 6:00 to 7:30, in a private event, April 5th, 6:00 to 8:00. Wine and malt beverage license to Art Bonn, for Gala to be held on March 19th at Helena College, 6:00 to 10:00, 50 Goddard Avenue. All kinds temporary, Divine Ripe Grill, for a hockey breakup dinner, to be held on March 19th, 4:00 to 7:00, at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway. Wine and malt temporary, the Puppet Showplace Theater, in connection with the Puppet Slam on March 19th, from 8:00 to 11:00, at 32 Station Street. And Pine Manor College, in connection with events, at 400 Heath Street, wine and malt dinner event, June 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and all kinds alcohol for a birthday party, June 26th, 5:00 to 10:00. All those in favor, please say aye.
Can we make comments before we vote?
By all means.
One of the companies we're voting to provide a wine and malt, or beverage license to is Spanish, is the Olive Connection, which, as I think you all know, is a new business in town, right up the street from where I live. It's, it's a really great business, they sell quality olive oils that are properly labeled, which is a real problem in this world, and I just want to give a shout-out to that business. I know them, I mean, I know them because I live near them, and I want to, I want to say that, you know, I really appreciate what they're doing here in town.
Okay.
Anyone else want to do a commercial for that favorite business?
Unpaid, by the way. They don't even know I did that.
I'm getting a quart of olive oil at his house.
All those in favor of all those temporary wine and all kinds alcohol, et cetera, as, as read by me. Please say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so, we're now on to the main calendar. We're only 10 minutes late, so we made up five minutes. The first item is Assistant Director for Community Planning, Joe Viola, and Judy Barrett of RKG Associates will appear to provide an update with respect to the housing production plan and community process. And Select-
Hi.
And Selectman Heller is joining us remotely. I've, I've read the appropriate script. Mr. Viola?
Good evening, Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. I'm actually, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us some time on your agenda this evening, as we look to have a discussion about the town's housing production plan process. I actually would like to turn the microphone over to Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board, and also a, a member of our HPP Working Committee. He wants to say a few words and introduce our consultant team. And also wanted to acknowledge Linda Hamlin, who's also on our-
He's in the flag.
He's in the flag, so, so with that, I'll turn it over to Roger.
Mr. Blood, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. We miss Selectman Heller this evening, and if she's-
She's here.
She's there. Well, hello Nancy? Because Nancy, as you know, Selectman Heller was the-
Good evening.
Hello.
Where's Nancy?
As you know, she was the co-sponsor of a, of a town meeting article in this, in the spring that triggered the process that we're about to give you a little update and introduce our consultant. And for as much the benefit of folks that may be listening, as, as you all who have maybe heard a bit of this before, I might take just a few moments to, to give you the little background. In the, at the spring town meeting, town meeting passed, I think it was unanimous, Article 17, which in part said that the Housing Advisory Board and the Planning Board are requested by town meeting to take advantage of available planning tools to ensure that Brookline makes progress towards its affordable housing goal in a manner that optimizes the town's opportunity to secure a Chapter 40B safe harbor status, including through the development of a housing production plan, and that the plan will be acceptable to the Commonwealth's 40B regulators, and also that the plan is, is sensitive to the integrity of existing residential properties and neighborhoods. The follow-up to town meeting, town meeting's request began with the formation of a housing production plan working group, which consists of two members each from the HAB and the Planning Board, including both chairs, who are here tonight, and four Planning Board staff members, including the Department Director, Allison Steinfeld, and two individuals from the department's Housing Division. The working group developed and disseminated requests for proposals to assist the town with its housing production plan, and responses were received and reviewed in early fall. Two finalists were interviewed, and one selected, whom you're gonna meet tonight, was selected by the group. Our housing production plan consultants consists of a three-member team that is led by RKG Associates, and is joined by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC, and Jennifer Goldson Associates. RKG Associates has been in business for 35 years. They have four offices, including one here in Quincy, another in Dover, New Hampshire, and two more in, one in suburban DC, and one in Atlanta, Georgia. The consultants team leader on our project is Judy Barrett, who you're about to meet. Judy has 30 years of experience in planning and community development with a specialized practice in housing and affordable housing. The team we've selected, including MAPC, notably has performed over a dozen housing production plans here in eastern Massachusetts. We've selected the RKG team not only for their deep experience with housing production plans, but also for their commitment, not just to produce a report that's acceptable to the Commonwealth, but to help lead an intensive process of public engagement with interested individuals and groups in the community. So, again, those that are watching, we hope that you'll find interest in what, what this project is all about, and take advantage of the opportunity to participate in a number of public meetings that will be taking place over the coming months. As with the initial town meeting article, the housing production process will seek to strike an important balance between the goals of affordable housing production on the one hand, and the community expressed concerns about retaining neighborhood integrity, residential neighborhood integrity on the other. So, on behalf of our housing production working group, I'm very pleased to introduce Judy Barrett, who will share with you more about her team's work program, which will be extending through mid-June.
Roger, before you leave, though, maybe you want to get on everyone's calendar, March 28th is your- calendar, um, March twenty-eighth is your-
I think that Judy's gonna-
Okay, all right.
-give you all of the dates.
All right.
Yep, sure do.
Okay, Ms. Barrett?
Thank you.
Come join us.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm actually joined tonight by Jen Goldson, who, uh, is, is on the team with me, and was probably gonna have a few words to say about the March twenty-eighth meeting, which you already, um, mentioned. Um, I'm really delighted to be here, and I'm delighted to be on this team. Um, we've all worked on housing production plans in a variety of communities, and just so everybody kind of understands what this creature is. A housing production plan, um, it really consists of three key pieces. One is a needs assessment, which is what we're working on now, and planning to submit a draft, um, report on the needs assessment later this week to the Planning Department. Um, the second piece of it is a set of goals for the community, and some of those are numeric, having to do with the safe harbor issue that I know your community is concerned about. And some of it is really around qualitative issues. If you're going to be working toward the ten percent statutory minimum, what needs do you want to try to address? Which ones are the most important in the community, and how might you go about doing that? So, um, and then what types of housing types perhaps would you want to encourage as you're working toward those goals? And the third piece is the implementation strategies, which is really key, and it's probably the most challenging part of any of these projects, because it's one thing to say we have needs and we have these goals, it's another thing to actually lay out a path for addressing them. And so, um, that will be sort of the third key piece. Throughout this process, we've tried to provide for a variety of public participation opportunities. Um, you could do a housing production plan entirely off data and have a plan that no one's ever gonna be able to implement, or you can do a plan where you're consulting with the community throughout and have something that's more likely to succeed. So toward that end, we do have, uh, a first community meeting coming up at the end of, of the month to talk about needs and also goals. Um, and Jen, I'm gonna ask you to speak to that in a minute. But throughout, for all the major milestones in the project, we have continuing, um, community workshops. There'll be a later workshop around kind of site selection, not so much asking people to point to parcels on a map, but rather what kinds of standards would you use to pick appropriate locations for affordable housing? Um, and then to sort of vet what locations show up based on the application of those criteria. Um, and then, of course, we'll look at the whole plan. So, over the coming months, that's what we'll be doing. We've actually already started providing for some electronic ways for people to participate. We recently, um, made a, a very simple survey available through Survey Monkey, um, and just closed that down this morning so we could use the information in the draft needs assessment. It's not a statistically valid survey, but it does give an opportunity for people to participate, especially those who may not come to a meeting. And, and one of the things that I thought the board might be interested in knowing is when we closed the survey down this morning, we had about five hundred and thirty-five respondents.
Wow.
Um, and about one in every four of the resident respondents, one of the questions we asked was, do you live in Brookline or not? And some of the people who responded are not residents, perhaps they work here, or have some other affiliation with the community. But about one in four of the resident respondents indicated that they would probably be moving out of Brookline in the next five years, and most of them cited high housing costs as a reason for that. Um, about seventy percent of the resident respondents said it's really important to them to try to stay here as they age, but they had concerns about whether the housing choices and the public amenities are here that would allow them to, um, to age in place. Um, we did get a fairly healthy response from tenants, uh, from renters as well, often that's the hardest population to reach, uh, but there were about two hundred, which is thirty-six percent of the resident respondents. And many of them said it was kind of unlikely that they would be buying a home here, um, and most of them cited the cost of housing, which I don't think is probably a surprise to anybody, um, you know, in the room. And so, we then kind of asked people if they had any thoughts on, on strategies perhaps that the town should prioritize, and the ones that surfaced, uh, to the top were helping people stay in the community as they age, uh, encouraging the creation of homes to attract young professionals, and encouraging creation of homes with a mix of price ranges. So those were the ideas that people tended to sort of support. Um, again, it's not a statistically valid survey, but it does give you some insight as to how some people who are motivated enough to answer a survey feel about the community's needs. Um, and I think I would just like to ask Jen, if you want to maybe explain to the board what we're gonna be trying to do on the twenty-eighth, that would be super.
Yeah, sounds good. Hi, I'm Jen Goldson. Uh, and what I'd like to just go over very briefly, um, is first to encourage, 'cause I'm tight, to encourage you all to come on the twenty-eighth, and I hope that you can. We'll be having the workshop in the Pierce School Cafeteria, and I actually don't recall what time it starts. It's probably at seven, yeah. Uh, and so, the purpose of this, this is the first of four community workshops that we'll be holding, really it's about one every month over the next four months. And the purpose of this workshop is to help develop goals to incorporate into the plan. And so, to help community members do that, we'll be first giving a sense of what the housing needs assessment is showing. And we're developing some infographics to help folks understand some of that as well. So I think it'll be an interesting presentation, uh, and we're going to be doing this partially in presentation mode and partially in open house mode. And so the open house mode will allow people to circulate throughout the cafeteria to different stations that will all be staffed by one of our team members. And at those stations, people can learn more about housing needs, and what do we mean by this and that, and how did you come up with this other thing? Um, and then they'll also get a chance to give, uh, their own feedback on some of the draft goals that we'll have developed by then that's based on the housing needs. So it'll be very interactive, the first of four, and we're hoping, even though it's not a requirement that people attend all four, we are hoping that we get lots of folks who do come to all four of them. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I also don't want to take up a lot of your time. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Selectman Heller, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm looking forward to participating in the process.
Yeah, as, as am I. One of the, uh, one of the, as part of the implementation plan, as I understand it, uh, part of that is identifying parcels, is it not? Yeah?
That is one of the, um, the requirements, if not actual parcels, then at least areas in the community where it would be appropriate to encourage a mix of housing types.
Right, so I just wanted to alert the community that-
Mm-hmm.
-that, uh, that's going to be one of the outcomes here, so-
Yep.
Um, it's, it would be very good to, for folks to participate.
People always like to identify parcels that aren't in their neighborhood, yeah.
It's funny how that works.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'll ask a question. How granular are you expecting this, um, this workshop on the twenty-eighth to get? Are we gonna have a conversation about forty-R, forty-S, um, you know, forty alphabet soup, or are we still at a high level here?
Well, this really is at the high level, although the way we structured it, or we'll be structuring it with open house stations, it gives folks who are wanting to really roll up their sleeves and give us comments about things like that, um, the opportunity to do that. Not everybody will be at that same level, so it's, it's a good setup for a mix of backgrounds and knowledge bases.
Yeah, so what Selectman Franco was referring to is different sections of the, uh, state, um, general laws which encourage various aspects of affordable housing production.
Which all have their set of advantages and disadvantages, so.
Right, right. Any other questions? Well, the-
I have one.
Ah, Selectman Heller?
I have another comment, uh, question actually, and that is, I think it would be helpful if, uh, it could be explained what happens in, in the process after this housing production plan is actually, um, completed, where it goes, how does it help us? I think that would be an important thing for the public to understand.
That's, yes, that's a, that's a great question, and I should've covered that, and I didn't, I apologize. When we, um, finish the, the plan, um, we will be bringing it to the Selectman and the Planning Board for a joint vote of support. The state won't consider it until both boards approve. Uh, once the state has approved it, and you now have an approved housing production plan, um, then as you, uh, if you, if you do continue to approve either comprehensive permits or other ways to create affordable housing, um, if you accrue enough production in, in any given year, you can qualify for what's called safe harbor status. And safe harbor status is really a way of saying, we are working diligently toward our ten percent statutory minimum. In the past year, we have created X number of units, which is this sort of threshold that you need to reach, and don't ask me what it is, 'cause I'm forgetting right now what Brookline's is. Do you remember, Roger?
Hundred thirty-something.
Okay, thank you, so you know.
Oh, yeah.
If you reach that target in a year, then you qualify for a safe harbor status, and if DHCD agrees, then you'll get a letter that says you in fact have met your production goal, and for a year, um, you would be in a position, if you choose, to either continue to approve comprehensive permits or deny them.
Right.
So it's, it's a way to manage the, um, the volume of housing production is really what the safe harbor status is about. If you're doing your job, um, from the state's point of view, if you're doing a jo, your job toward production, then you get a, a bit of a reprieve. And then the reprieve goes away, and you start production again, but that's the whole point. Sir?
Just, um, to add one, one, um, additional thought to that, when you all approve, we, we hope you will end up approving the, uh, the work product that's gonna take place, uh, and it's sent up to the state, that does not provide a safe harbor in any hard fashion. What it does do, or what we're hoping it will do, will, um, have the, uh, in effect the town will be sending a message to the community and prospective developers that they're more likely to receive a relatively receptive, um, uh, welcoming if, uh, they, they propose development in areas that the production plan identifies as more, uh, in, in keeping with the town's, uh, criteria, and anything that's not in that area would be receiving a less receptive plan, even though there's no safe harbor. It actually requires, uh, for the safe harbor itself, where the town recovers the power to make its own decisions on what to approve through, through the ZBA. Uh, that requires actual production, uh, the permitting of housing, not just the inclusion of particular locations in the plan. So it's very much of a two-step, uh, process.
So, a question I have, and I don't know who would answer this. So if, if, out of this process by the summer, let's say, um, we, the boards approve a housing production plan, can any of the current, what I'm describing as tsunami of fortyBs, then count towards, um, our housing production to get us certified sooner?
Any production that happens pursuant to that plan would count. So if your plan is approved on August first, and on August fifteenth, the Board of Appeals grants a comprehensive permit for some number of units, those units will count toward your certification, if you're eligible, you know, if you're, it, it contributes to your ability to become certified.
And does the particular parcel that gets approved has to, have to be in that housing?
No.
Okay.
No, it does not. And, and really, I think it's part of why, um, you know, you, you may want to think, as many communities have, instead of naming parcels, think about areas of the community that are appropriate. Um, many communities do that, instead of trying to name a parcel, because then people get into arguments later about, well, why was it this parcel and not that parcel? Those are decisions your, your community's gonna have to make.
Well, we'll get into arguments sooner.
Yeah.
In our, in our case. That's a good strategy. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very-
Thank you.
Ah, Ms. Hamlin.
Is this not a question?
Sorry.
It's just a very minor sidelight, but, uh, Jen was a planner in our community here in Brookline for quite a while, and we were sorry that she left, but we're so glad she brought expertise back to our town, so.
Thank you.
Glad to be working with her again.
And welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This should be a very interesting process. Okay, moving on, uh, we now have some interviews for boards and commissions. Uh, first one up is, uh, Dan Gosten. Did I get that right?
Yes. Can I call you back in a while?
Yes.
I'm-
Selectman Heller is dropping off. Um, and Mr. Gosten is, uh, interviewing for the Arts Commission.
Correct.
So tell us, uh, your interest and why you'd like to be on the Arts Commission.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the committee, thank you. Um, I have been kind of an intermittent resident of Brookline. I graduated Boston College in two thousand nine, lived here two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen, then went off to the UK to study musicology, uh, but now I'm back in the Boston area, and I couldn't be happier to live in Brookline again. I really made it, uh, an effort to come back to this community. I think it's really remarkable how much, uh, of course, how many resources the town has, but also the wealth of talent that is here within this, this little enclave of the surrounding Boston area. Um, and I think that a lot of recent programs that have really tapped into that, uh, community talent, um, the, uh, art projects, I mean, we see some here in the room, uh, also more events, uh, that are happening to, um, celebrate the grant recipients, uh, major grant recipients, the poet laureate, laureate program has been, uh, has been very great for the profile of Brookline, and I think that, um, I would very much like to be on this commission as kind of a muse, a more musical voice. Uh, there's a lot going on with poetry and writing, um, and, uh, fine art, and I think that having a little more voice for the musicians in the town might be a little beneficial. But of course, I'm not just a musician, I'm generally an artist, I would say, um, and especially because of my liberal arts education, I think that integrating a lot of these community projects is, um, imperative to survival, not just because of, uh, you know, dwindling money for the arts, but also, uh, as comprehensive, a comprehensive way to bring people together, I think it's very important to, um, have wide-reaching events, not just for one specific kind of, uh, medium, but to bring everything together, and I think that will help the community a lot. Uh, I have past experience in arts administration, uh, with the Handel &amp; Haydn Society as an intern, and then, uh, an intern marketing assistant for them. Uh, and of course, I've been director of music and ensemble managers for many things at Boston College, Boston University, and at the University of Durham in England, where I just was for the past two years.
Hello.
Sorry. Oh, that's okay.
Selectman Heller just rejoined us.
No problem, thank you for joining again. Um, and so, my, uh, my interest in this is to really get back into the community, to give back to a community that is, that has really fostered, uh, my own endeavors, uh, while a student, but also as a resident, and now working here again. I work just across the street at the Starbucks here, right now anyway, um, still applying to other positions, but, uh, I see a lot of, uh, especially visual artists come in, and that they have such great talent, and I think that we really need to foster that. So I'd like to represent not only musicians and maybe, uh, a little younger generation on the commission, but also to, uh, get really interdisciplinary approaches to events.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, well, I'm delighted to see a musician who's, uh, interested in the Arts Commission, 'cause I, I think that, that, as you pointed out, it's an area that they really haven't been working in, but, um, could, and I wonder if you have any sort of thoughts of events or programs or something that you'd like to kick off?
Yeah, I think that, well, a lot, what's going on in, of course, the city of Boston, I don't know how taboo that is to mention, things that happen over there, um, but what a lot of the smaller, uh, kind of, uh, chamber ensemble-based, um, groups are doing are more private events, um, and the Brookline Symphony, um, certainly can benefit from smaller, uh, smaller, either, either home events or fundraising events, um, being more prominent around town, maybe during the summer, uh, to attract not only the members of the symphony, but also, um, a lot of other musicians who happen to live in Brookline, but may not know that there are programs to support them. And I think, uh, even my friends here that live in Brookline have no idea that the town can support their kind of, their, their artistry, their work. I, I think a lot of smaller groups, smaller choral groups, particularly that I've worked with, uh, would be happy to perform here in Brookline, and I think getting more exposure for them is, you know, of course, beneficial for everyone.
Selectman Green?
Yeah, give me some sense of ideas you have about bringing the arts to the public schools, or the schools here in Brookline. I mean, for, even more so than we do now, um, you, what, what role do you think the Arts Commission can play to sort of, to, um, enhance the, uh, music, performing arts, you know, and other artistic forms for, uh, public school kids?
I think for schools specifically, um, it's very beneficial for, uh, more seasoned professionals, um, to come in and give workshops, to give talks, um, and I think a lot of people, uh, a lot of people in the music community are willing to do that. They do that with Boston Public Schools. Uh, they, there's a big program at Dana Farber, uh, that incorporates some early music, early musicians that come in, uh, a couple times a month to play for patients, and I think that sort of thing can, uh, can translate into the public school realm as well. Uh, also, I think that the university, surrounding universities can take place in this, too. There are a lot of great graduate musicians, and again, some that even live right here in Brookline, whether they chose to, or just because it's close to BU or whatever, but, um, we can tap into that and use them as a, as a resource, uh, to go into the public schools to show what these, to show the kids what, um, can happen with the arts. I know when I was in high school, we didn't have a very good, uh, music program. I'm from New Britain, Connecticut, it's a, a mid-sized city, but didn't have a lot of resources. Uh, and so a lot of kids weren't, didn't get involved with music, even though they were probably interested in it. And I think that's just because we didn't have any role models that came in. Um, we don't have, again, the universities surrounding us, the prof- the professional musicians who live in Brookline like they do here. I think workshops of that sort would be very beneficial.
Selectman Franco.
One thing, one comment, and I don't expect you to respond to this necessarily, is I would love to see the Arts Commission form a tighter bond with some town events that take place. Selectman Green did a remarkable job at the Martin Luther King Day event this year, incorporating poetry and taking advantage of some of the real resources we have in this community regarding poetry and the spoken arts. We have not done a great job, in my estimation, tapping into the professional, the student, the amateur musical talents of Brookline residents and incorporating them into town events that we have. I think that's something that the Arts Commission could serve a great role in helping to facilitate. And should you be appointed to the Arts Commission, it's an area that I would urge you to give some thought to and perhaps explore.
Selectman Heller, do you have anything?
No, I'm pleased to see another call by applicant, and, you know, I think it's a valuable commission.
Right, as do I. Okay, so.
Just one thing. Don't forget the elderly population here in Brookline. I think there's a lot of opportunities to expand the exposure of that population to, you know, real quality art and, you know, performance art and other artistic endeavors.
Yes, correct.
The good news is there are several vacancies on the commission.
So we're not going to be doing the appointments tonight, but you'll be hearing from us.
Excellent, thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one up is Joan Mahon. Come join us. This is for the commission for the disabled.
Good evening, and it's Mahon, just so you know.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Yes?
Tell us about yourself and why you'd like to join the commission.
I am a lifelong resident of Brookline, born and raised here. I raised my children here. They went to the Pierce School and graduated from Brookline High School. I, in college, got involved in the deaf community and worked at a school for the deaf and became a sign language interpreter. I subsequently, my third child was born with a hearing loss, and she's deaf. And so I've been very involved in that community, as well as the deaf-blind community, and also involved in the public school system with the understanding, what years ago was called the Understanding Handicaps Program. Then it changed to the Understanding Disabilities. And now it is Understanding Our Differences. I was instrumental in writing the Deafness Unit. At the time, it was called the Hearing Unit, and it was like, well, this is not about the hearing, this is about the deaf. So I've been involved in the disability community for many years. And now I have a granddaughter at the Pierce School, and I'm once again co-chairing the Understanding Our Differences Program. And I am, you know, sort of back in the throes of the community, and I would very much like to see some changes made. And I think being on the commission would give me some validity going forward to places like the Coolidge Corner Theater and asking for better captioning services for the deaf. As, I have a friend that's lived in Brookline for more than 30 years. And she's deaf, and she has to go over to the Kendall's Queer Theater to go to open caption films. I know there are many devices that provide captions for the deaf, but my daughter included, they don't necessarily want to be singled out and have the device in front of them. We all know we like to sort of meld with everyone else. Ironically, in Boston Sunday Globe, in the magazine section, there's a very lengthy article by the, about the Massachusetts Cultural Council. And I thought they put this very, they talked very succinctly about what they're doing and what's happening around the state. There, I'll read something, I want to read a quote from the article. And also, there's a list of cultural organizations that are participating in this new initiative that they have, and Brookline doesn't have one of them. So I think that the Coolidge Corner Theater may be one of the first ones potentially to participate in this initiative. It's called the Massachusetts Cultural Council's UP Inclusive Design Initiative. UP is Universal Participation. "Universal Participation recognizes that to grow audiences, institutions should improve experiences for everyone. Greater access doesn't just benefit people with disabilities, greater access benefits all people. Your friend with dyslexia, your cousin with the broken ankle, a child with behavioral issues, or you tired from an afternoon well-spent at the museum in search of a seat." So as we know, in Brookline, I intend to go out of here feet-first, and it's an aging population. My hearing is not what it used to be. We all need access to these services. And I think that Brookline, being the progressive community that it is, can be the cutting edge of getting town-wide accessibility for everybody, and not just the people who, in this article, say that they have the inability, not the disability, to do things. And as we age, we are all going to be in that position if we fortunately live as long as my mother did to the age of 94. So I would very much like to be on the commission. And I know at this juncture that they're contemplating what to call the commission. As I've just noted, there have been many changes in the language of what we call the unified, I'm not unified, rather, the Understanding Disabilities. So I'm not sure where the language is going for the commission, but right now it's a commission for the disabled? I'm not even so sure, or of the disabled? So that's another, you know, as we know, language is very important. Anyway, that's who I am, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
There's hardly any questions to be asked. You've got a very clear idea of what you want to do.
So I actually, I came from a commission for the disabled meeting earlier this evening. And I can report to you and to my colleagues on the board and to the general public that we have docketed a conversation about potentially changing the name for next month's meeting. So we beat you to the punch. We're one step ahead of you.
Okay.
I, I'll just sort of comment on some of the remarks that you gave in your statement. I think, I think your focus on making Brookline an inclusive place for all residents is right on, right on the money. And while the commission hasn't had a conversation about, about captioning at the Coolidge Corner Theater or any other facility in town, I think that those types of conversations about allowing everybody in the community to access some of the cultural gems, the, the, the other businesses that we have in town is right on the money and sort of falls into the, the conversations that the commission is currently engaged in as it sort of tries to navigate its way and find what its next big project is going to be.
I have a question, because I don't watch the selectman meetings at home. But I don't know, are these, these meetings captioned?
What?
Are these meetings captioned at all? Do you know? Do you have any kind of facility?
I don't know.
I don't think we are. It's not captioned.
Okay.
It's not captioned.
Okay. Because there's such thing as captioning at real time, a cart reporter that could sit here, much as this woman does.
I believe.
There are lots of ways to access it.
Captioning is actually a topic that came up in our licensing hearings. Our licensing hearings, and we're talking to Comcast, whose license is up for renegotiation. As one of the possible things we might be asking for. Whether we can negotiate that is another story.
Listening to the gentleman before me, I thought, I was at the Dancing with the Stars fundraiser this, I guess it was in, I don't know if it was in December or whenever it was.
It was in, yeah.
And there's a family who has a daughter who has cerebral palsy, and I believe that's what her condition is. And they are working towards accessible playgrounds. That's another focus for the commission. Also, just incorporating the arts in general and having people, deaf people perform beautiful art, poetry, and plays. You have lots of different avenues which go to, in that community as well. And that's just another, listening to him, I thought, oh, that's another great way to include people in this, in this demographic, in the, in the community.
Right.
Let me just add that the skill set which you've talked about this evening, you know, serving the deaf community, is something that's not currently represented on the commission. And I think that having somebody who, who has some experience relating to that, that community at a very personal level and can help the commission provide services, service to what is not an insignificant portion of the Brookline population is in and of itself going to be a great resource in addition to the current roster of members.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I want you all to know that I've known Joan many, many years. I first met her when she was acting as the sign language interpreter for Newton students, deaf students who came to the schools, our schools, to, in the unit on deafness, in the Understanding Handicaps Program, as it was called then, which I was then coordinating. And I've known Joan's dedication to the topic of disabilities and especially knowledge about the deaf community. And over the many years, and even before she had a child who has a hearing issue. So I'm thrilled that she is applying, begged her to do it before, and she's always resisted. But I think that it would be great to have someone of her caliber on the commission. And I, I think the issues that she's raising are very significant, and I would support trying to get the television broadcasts closed captioned, to have facilities in our movie theater and other places for the community, for the deaf community. So I'm thrilled you're applying, Joan, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Any other comments, questions? We're not voting this tonight, but you'll hear from us. And thank you so much for applying.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Sure. And next one up is Lark Palermo for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Palermo? Palermo?
It's also the capital of Sicily.
There you go. And I know you've been before us recently on another, for another commission. But I'm glad to see you're applying for the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a very important commission or body, which is going to be under the gun with a whole bunch of 40B comprehensive permits, which is a different kind of process than the normal 40A, normal zoning process. So, you know, the commission's going to have a big workload over the next year.
Okay, don't scare her off.
So why don't you tell us about yourself and why you want to join?
Well, you are correct. I came before the Board of Selectmen a few months ago after having applied for the Housing Advisory Board and possibly the Board of Trustees for the Walnut Hill Cemetery. I would put both of those in the category of sort of dipping my toe into the water of doing civic work here in the town of Brookline. I love the town, I've been here over 20 years. I'm at a point in my life where my husband and I are both empty nesters. And although I still have a full-time job and other things, I do have the time to devote to the town of Brookline, and thought this would be a nice way to start that process. But unfortunately, neither of these opportunities had any vacancies. And at the time, you gave me the advice of talking with other people in the town about other ways that could be helpful, because I do have a desire to be helpful. And after discussing it with a few other people, including Roger Blood and Polly Selko and a couple of members of the Board of Selectmen and my neighbor, I think I've been convinced that I should jump into the deep end of the pole as opposed to dipping my toe into the water. Clearly, that's what this would be. And, and Selectman Daley has identified my only apprehension with, which is, you know, do I really have enough time to devote to what is clearly going to be an enormous workload? Because my goal, again, is to help the town of Brookline and help the residents of the town of Brookline. And I would be dismayed if I, if I thought I couldn't devote enough time to what is clearly going to be a big workload. But I have the background. I have practiced real estate law for many years. I have represented primarily commercial real estate developers before zoning boards of appeals. So I have, you know, good working knowledge of what that involves. I worked with my own neighborhood, again, almost 20 years ago in Button Village when we had a development proposal before our zoning board of appeals to manage the project so that it was acceptable to everyone in the neighborhood. It had been the Healy Gardens Center and was converted to seven units of housing. And I also now am involved in aspects of affordable housing. I'm, did service the General Counsel to the Community Builders, which is a nonprofit affordable housing development company, and then transitioned into running this charitable organization, which is Habitat for Humanity Greater Boston. I emphasize the fact that it's a charitable organization because we, we do the lion's share of our work with charitable contributions, which frankly allows us to be far more flexible than if we were using government funding. So it's kind of a luxury, because we can tailor our projects to work to the benefit of the communities, the donors, the users. It's a, it's a different process than, than a typical affordable housing developer follows. But in any event, I'm back.
I'm glad you are.
Well, thank you.
Selectman Daley.
Well, I'm, and your background is very interesting, and you've had the experience on the developer side and now on the affordable housing side, but also, as, as you say, as an active neighborhood person. And so, and I personally think that, you know, obviously, when you're on the zoning board of appeals, you have to apply the zoning law. But there are areas in which there is some, some leeway as to how much you, you know, ask for from them and the, and I wonder if you can just sort of give us a little bit of a sense of your idea of, you know, of what kind of balance to strike between neighborhood interests and the developers' interests and?
Well, my personal opinion, based on my years of service in state government, is that when you're an appointed representative of the public, that your goal is to represent the public. The developers are the private sector seeking something from the public. And so it's, in my view, in an instance like this, the job of the zoning board of appeals is to represent the interests of the residents of the town of Brookline. And if you're facing a proposal from a developer, your job is to get the best outcome from that developer's proposal for the residents of the town of Brookline.
I also think, I would love to have, and I, you know, I realize they're dealing with a lot of cases and maybe don't have time to sort of contemplate this. But I would love to have the zoning board of appeals occasionally say to us, you know, you guys ought to think about making some changes in the zoning law. You know, here is an area that we see that there have kind of been problems in how we have to administer it, or you could make this better, or something like that. Is that something you could foresee?
I would not do it precipitously. I, I think that it could be helpful to have data from the zoning board of appeals for the Board of Selectmen to understand what issues had arisen under what sections of the code and whether there could be benefits to changing the code. But I would want it to be a community process as well.
Well, yeah, it would have to be, given that I'd go to town meeting and get a two-thirds vote. But sometimes we don't, we don't always hear about what areas of the zoning bylaw are problematic. So, so it would be good to get feedback to us, you know, through the planning department. That would be a good thing. Any other questions? I think we're going to try to make appointments in the next few weeks, because we need to get the ZBA fully staffed for the upcoming cases. So, you'll be hearing from us.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Neil?
Yeah.
I've had an opportunity to talk with Lark and also have looked at her resume, and it's very impressive. She clearly has a huge knowledge base, and while she works in a charitable organization now, she's done a lot of affordable housing. And I'm hoping that, you know, we have other people who apply and sometimes don't know as much. And I'm hoping that you would be willing to mentor people in terms of the law on the ZBA and help others understand some of the nuances, maybe hold your own, you know, you want others to hold your own mini workshops for yourself on, especially the 40B law, because I do think it is pretty complicated. And I don't know that we're taking advantage of all of its provisions.
Well, it absolutely is very complicated, and I'd be more than happy to offer any service or information that I could to other members of the ZBA.
Sure. And I'll also mention for the public, the ZBA, there are some skill sets identified in the law that the ZBA is required to have, and one of the skill sets is that of an architect or a builder. And we only have one person with that background on the ZBA, and it would be probably a good idea if we can get another person. So, if anyone out there has that skill set and has the interest, it's a great board to be on, and it's, it's one where you can really make an impact on your community.
But one of the skill sets is attorney, we should say.
Right.
I'll try to think of some architects.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for applying.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Okay, now we're doing budgets, and we'll do the Finance Department. I see Mr. Cirillo.
So, Mr. Cirillo, you missed me, as usual. When I say good things about you, you're not in the room. I am thrilled at the AAA bond rating once again. I know this has been close to your heart, to keep that up for these many years that you've, that you've worked here, and you've done a great job on that, and thanks to you and all the financial team.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Matter of fact, that's very new information. We received that about noon time today. So, that's very new. The rest of the community probably doesn't know it yet. First of all, I appear before you this evening to present the fiscal '17 Finance Department budget. As usual, I like to just summarize the position of the department and introduce my division heads, and then, any specific questions you have to the department heads, division heads, they'll be available to answer those questions. Appearing with me this evening, and I like to say in the order of longevity, David Giandakakis, the Purchasing Agent, Gary McCabe, the Chief Assessor, and Michael DePietro, the Controller. The Finance Department's had a good year. Specifically, these division heads have had a very good year, a lot of successes across the board. I'm just going to name a few right now. Purchasing managed to get an extraordinary low bid on energy prices and locked us in for a year, saving tremendous amount of money. I like to believe that David balanced the fiscal year '17 budget for the town. Gary is taking the point and the lead in coordinating the town's response to all of these very difficult ATB cases. And Michael took the lead on completing the audit, and as you all know, we had an extraordinary report from that audit. So, they've, the three of them had a very, very good year. The fiscal '17 operating budget is $3,171,000, which actually represents an increase of 7.83 percent. But in fact, it's, it is not really what it appears to be. True, the true number, really, is a level-funded budget with an increase of roughly 0.3 percent. The increase is the result of pulling money from other departments and consolidating the credit card fees in the Treasurers Division. That represented $220,000 of the $230,000 increase. Without that policy change, again, the budget would have gone up by 0.3 percent. Full-time positions, same level amount, 30.4 FDEs. Some of the things that have changed in the departments, of course, everybody has step increases. And I would also point out that as an annual event, the Munis Financial Software always has this annual increase, so there's an increase in that. But once again, the purchasing agent balanced the entire town budget and balanced the Finance Department budget by having a vehicle removed from the budget from prior years, saving the town some money. So, overall, the Finance Department is essentially level-service budgeted. I will say, because I actually am as passionate about this issue as all of the Selectmen are, we've had a very good year of hiring people. And I have a policy that I try to hire the most qualified people. And in the last four, or the last five of the six hires we made have been minority candidates. And they are extraordinary individuals, and I'm so happy to have them throughout the division, in each of the four divisions. So, we've been really fortunate in that. Currently, our department has approximately, in a minority status, about 18 and 1/2 percent of our department is in the minority status. And again, I just want to say, extraordinary workers. With that, I'll open for questions and have my team answer any questions you might have.
So, I find it interesting, in consolidate, you know, when the credit card charges were kind of dispersed throughout the town budget, it never hit me that it, when you added it all up, it's over $200,000. By consolidating it in one department and managing it in one place, are there opportunities to get a better credit card deal?
Well, first of all, we use those opportunities now. The individual line department does not negotiate the fees. The fees are negotiated by the IT Director, the Deputy Town Administrator, and the Finance Director. And that has been the case since 2003. And in fact, the bills, credit card bills on a monthly basis, are paid through the Treasury Division. But we put the expenditure into the line department. So, essentially, we're administering it, but it has been hitting the line department's budget. The reason for the consolidation is that there's really been a discussion over the last few years about our policy direction about who should absorb the fees. And I think this is appropriate to a fuller discussion on that, in which when you consolidate these numbers, you have a visual of what it is. In fact, this does not represent all of it anyway, because we, in our enterprise funds and revolving funds, we actually have fees in those, because they're baked into the fees of the enterprise funds. So, this represents the general fund consolidation of fees. And of course, there are some activities that the town doesn't pay fees on. We don't pay fees on real estate, because if we paid 2% on $200 million, it would probably wreck havoc on our budget. And the other one is on parking tickets. As I said earlier in a meeting this morning, if they do the crime, they have to do the time, they have to pay it. And so, we don't pay that fee, but all others, we have been paying, so.
So, one of the things we had talked about was passing on the fees for some, some of the programs that were currently absorbing the fees. So, for example, the motor vehicle excise tax, I don't think that's been implemented yet.
No, it's, the motor vehicle excise tax was in the Treasurers Division last year. The prior year was in IT. So, that's another move, movement.
But where, the town is absorbing the fees there.
Yes, and it's roughly $46,000, $47,000.
Right. But it seems to me there, there, other municipalities aren't being quite so generous in absorbing the fees, I think.
You know, although I've had a position, a very strong position on this for a number of years, I probably am going to pass on this one. This is, this is one that's going to, a discussion is going to take place over the next year, and I can't add anything to that discussion. So, I won't.
Selectmen Daily.
I actually have some questions for Mr. Giandakakis. I note that you start off of some of, some of what you were doing this, this year, talking about sand and salt, which
Right.
we probably used less than normal, I would guess.
Well, I defer to the Highway Department and the DPW to the actual usage. I know other years, obviously last year, and, you know, years with high snow. I know in talking to Kevin Johnson, they still have been purchasing salt, they still have been purchasing sand. There is a, an understanding that even some of these little storms, some of these icing events, you may want to address those directly with the DPW as far as what their usage. But I do believe, at least my sense of what purchase orders have been cut, it is a lower year, obviously, than definitely last year, and probably compared to a five-year average because of the temperatures. But as we all saw, I think it was last Friday, they, here and throughout the state, there was a lot of salt used in that Friday squall, or whatever you want to call it, that they had. So, there are still, but I think, you know, Kevin or Andy could probably give you a good answer on the actual usage of this.
Well, my next question, though, is about, now we're at, the price of gas is lower than I can remember it being since I was a kid, I think, and, which is a long time ago. So, are we able to purchase any in advance, to take advantage of these very low prices? And what, how are we handling that?
We purchase in a consortium. I actually purchased for 10 towns, including Brookline, in the Boston area. Pretty much everybody outside of Boston and Somerville, we do Newton, Cambridge, Arlington, Winchester, Waltham, all the way up to Woburn. And these, the 10 communities, because of our volume, I do the bids every year for the group, we've locked in prices for fiscal year '17 back in January. It's for gasoline, we're at $163, for diesel fuel, $155, and for heating fuel, $132. So, it has been beneficial both this year and next year. I'll be honest, last year, I probably came up here and said, gee, we're at $2 a gallon, that, we're not going to see that again. And a year later, here we are, even seeing significant reductions from there. So, it does benefit us to, basically, I monitor the market, starting around December through, there have been years when I've done the bids in June even. And we, out of the 15, 16 years that I've been doing this, we've only, the market has only beat us a couple of times. So, that's a good track record, and I hope to continue it next year when I'm here. We might see prices a little higher, I don't know, but we've at least, for fiscal year '17, done a good job at hedging the price going forward. And we have partners in the vendor community who, we respect our contracts, they will, you know, they will deliver and honor those prices through the whole year till the middle of calendar year '17.
And that's as far as you can go out?
Yeah, they will not usually go more than 18 months out. So, when we bid in January, we're actually looking at almost an 18-month period, even though we've, we're already locked in into this fiscal year. But yeah, we've, we've asked about doing two-year, three-year outs. The problem is the risk then becomes significant, and our price delta will go up, because they're going to say, well, in 2018, 2019, they don't know, they can't buy what they call strips from the marketplace, so it will end up costing us probably significantly more, you know, because there, but we are able to at least go out that, that whole fiscal year.
Okay, one final question. I know we're, we're a self-insurer up to a certain point, and then we get excess insurance on the market, is that...
We, well, basically, we have property insurance with a deductible of $100,000. So, we have all of our property, it's not liability, but all of our properties, the 60-odd buildings that we have in the town, the schools, the town buildings, they're all insured, all listed with a value of, for both the building and contents, that's reviewed every year. And we do have $100,000 deductible, which is a fairly significant one, but when you think about it based on, it's not really meant to cover maintenance costs, it's meant to cover real significant losses, like we incurred in 2010, we had about a million and a half claim. And last year, we're still sort of in discussions with the insurance company about some losses that we had, based on the four storms last winter. Still, still in discussion and probing, and we'll, we'll see. We filed a claim, but we haven't had a settlement yet on that. But the insurance process has been, has been reviewed by our outside insurance consultant that's over the years, has every two, three years, taken a look at what we have as a program, and they feel based on strictly for the property policy, we have a pretty successful and appropriate coverages for that, so for the buildings.
But pretty much all the insurance companies raised their rates after the snow last year, right?
They, this year, we always saw this year, the, and that's probably the unclassified budget, which comes up in a little bit, we increased the value of our buildings 3%, and our increase in premium went up 3%. So, it hasn't been, we haven't seen, at least in the year that, you know, this, this year that we've had for insurance, a significant increase due to that. Now, that doesn't say that perhaps the reinsurers and whatever next year may go up, but it takes a little bit of a lag time before the actual market kind of responds to that. But based on, we haven't had any significant losses, other than the 2010, in quite a few years, the market was pretty favorable for us for this current year. That's where the 3% increase, reflecting the 3%.
And on liability, we're totally self-insured?
Self-insured, yes, correct. Yeah, legal handles that, any kind of cases like that around town. Correct.
Selectmen Green.
A comment for Mr. Cirillo. Excuse me. As you, as you know, the question of the racial composition of the town workforce is a hot issue in this town, and frequently subject of a lot of misinformation. So, I appreciate your disclosing to us the success you're having in hiring minority candidates. Maybe you'd like to, you know, tell us a little more about who's been hired? Because this comes up constantly in town.
It's right across, across all, all divisions. I actually brought some statistics here. Hold on. I broke it down by division.
Yeah, this comes up constantly, and I agree, that's an important issue, but I, people don't always want the facts, they just want...
Yeah. It's, well, first of all, in the, we have one African-American, two and a half Hispanic-Americans, one Asian-American, excuse me, two Asian-Americans, one multiracial American, a handicapped position, and we have 18 and a half female employees, including 65% of our mid-managers. Extraordinary people all, and I'm very delighted with them. Could I add something to what David said on insurance? I think it's important. First of all, you have a number of buildings that may be constructed in the next few years, including the Devotion School, which has already begun. As value, building value is added on in the future, your property insurance is going to increase. I mean, we're, we're not, when we complete these buildings, we're not going to end up with the same value as we presently have. So, as you construct more space, particularly school space, this budget will be increasing. The other thing I want to point out, because on the issue of liability, is yes, we're self-insured, but we have the liability fund, which is out there to support the community. But our best defense is we have an extraordinary lot department who really wins more than they lose, and as a result of that, we don't have to use all of that money in our liability fund.
I should, I should also add that there is a statutory limitation on liability for municipal governments that, there's always that challenge, but for the most part, we do have a limit on, on the claims that can be made against municipality.
Selectmen Franco.
I'll ask, ask for an update on an issue that you usually address in your comments in budget season, and that's sort of the cross-training that occurs in your... in budget season, and that's sort of the cross-training that occurs in your, in your department. As, as we sort of adopt the Munis platform for more and more functions, I'm wondering if you're continuing that practice of sort of cross-training, or the, the automation of, of services in the, in the treasurer collector's office and the finance department in general renders that sort of cross-training unnecessary?
Well, first of all, I'm a proponent of cross-training, as you said, and the cross-training has really occurred in the clerical area of the community. It primarily occurs between purchasing controller in treasury divisions. The clerical support staff in the assessing division is at a higher level because of a, a more complicated role of the, the clerical person who deals with abatements of motor vehicle excise, she's a very talented individual, has been with us for a long time. So we, we do cross-train. Now, we, we have just this year completed one cross-training of somebody in the purchasing division, and the new hire that I have in the, in the treasury division, which came on in November or December, will be starting their cross-training in the controller's office and in the purchasing office in the next, in probably this month. So we want to have that opportunity. And as an incentive, of course, is when they do cross-train, as per an agreement with the union, these employees then could go up a full grade, and everybody, the clerical staff is taking advantage of that. They're willing to cross-train, they have, they are incentivized to cross-train, and it's worked out.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a question for Mr. DePietro, I think. And it's, it's about the, the Munis system, and I, I see in the, in your accomplishments in two thousand and sixteen, you completed the upgrade to Munis ten-point-five, but in your objectives for two thousand and seventeen, it's, you're upgrading again to version eleven. And I, I frequently hear from, you know, over the years, complaints about Munis not being able to do things. I mean, what, what, what's Munis eleven going to give us that we don't have now, and are you happy with it, or, or feeling that we should be shopping elsewhere, or what's the status?
No, I mean, overall, like any software system, there are pluses and minuses, but, but overall, I'd say, from a town perspective, it's very good at what it's intended to do for municipalities. They do specialize specifically in municipal government, municipal finance. So overall, I'm pleased with the software. As far as the enhancements related to version eleven, a lot of it is more technical, behind-the-scenes, it's not so much the, the front end that the day-to-day users see, it's more the back, the backend, the database, et cetera. So I don't envision dramatic changes as far as the ten-point-five to eleven version. For the day-to-day users, it's more the backend updates.
And also typically with these software packages, you kind of have to upgrade, because eventually, the support for the older version goes away.
Yeah, I was, I was about to say that. That is true, it goes away. The other thing I want to point out is that the town's policy, and I want to include the IT department in this discussion as well, because they've really been tremendous help to us in this, is that we do not, we are not the first ones to go to the next version. We would like someone else to test the tires before we, we go up and step up to the next version. Conversions are complicated, there are, change is difficult in any environment, and the municipal environment, it's, it's glacial, and it's very difficult to get through. So, we want to make sure that other communities have tested the software before we move up to that level.
That's a wise policy, in my experience.
I have one quick question for Mr. McCabe. You're talking about, when you're, this is your objectives, completing the development of the comparable sales mo, market model within the existing Kama system. Can you tell me what that is, and what it's doing for us?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Gary McCabe, Chief Assessor. The question is, objectives for seventeen, and we've listed that we're going to utilize a portion of our software that we have, we've populated the data, but we haven't actually used the model, it's a comparable sales model. A comparable sales approach to valuing properties, more of a single property approach, that a Realtor or a bank appraiser uses, they select, you know, half a dozen or so comparables and say, we're going to, we're going to assign a value of the subject based on the comparables. We apply more of a mass appraisal system, where we value more than one property, we value seventeen thousand properties. So that comp sales model, property by property, isn't, isn't going to arrive at new assessments, we're going to use that to look at taxpayers' concerns when they file appeals. And I'm hoping we can take that to the website as well, and say to the residents, the property owners of town, would you like to look at some comparable properties before you make a decision on whether to appeal or not? And so that's where it's headed, both for our use and for the homeowner's use, to say, you know, let the software and the data pick the comparables for you. That's what we want to do.
I want to compliment you on continuing to put as much information online as, as you can, I think people appreciate that.
Thank you. As noted in our annual report, we have a map on the website now, where all the sales that we use for arriving at our new assessments, with some assessment information. I'm going to attribute that in part to a decrease in the number of appeals this year from prior years, even with an override. So I, I think, yes, the more information we can put out about the assessments and how they were determined, the better for all of us.
I have a question for Mr. McCabe, as long as he's standing at the microphone. I don't expect a detailed answer to this question, but there've been a number of proactive development proposals across town, both on the commercial side and on the residential side. We've pontificated at some length about the number forty-B applications that are, have been filed and that, with the zoning board of appeal, or soon will be with the zoning board of appeals. I'm wondering if that has any impact upon your workload in your headcount? Is that something that we should be thinking about going forward, or is that really a non, a non-event in, in your mind?
Slakman-Franco, I think that's a very good question. Yes, the, the impact is more in how we view a property in Brookline, not the amount of time it, it takes. So I don't think there's an impact on our resource needs, either personnel or otherwise, but it does change our focus to the value of the underlying land. And, you know, that's becoming more and more clear that a redevelopment is interested in the location and the size and shape and, and access and zoning. Things that, beyond the, the building, oftentimes, as we've seen, the existing building is not contributing to that new development whatsoever, in many of these cases. So, it's causing us to focus on, more on what could be developed, as opposed to what is developed. So, and, and that's just, you know, a market-driven, obviously market-driven concept, but it's become more important for us to consider than it may have in relation to the existing building. You know, you may have heard the Dunkin' Donuts at Twenty Boylston Street sold for what I would consider a price well above what a Dunkin' Donuts would sell for. So, you know, you look beyond the, the immediate use to, to some prospective potential future use of that property. So that's our, that's our shift, and how we think about property value, not how much time, you know, and tools we need to value it. Is that helpful?
Very helpful.
Mr. Kleckner.
Yes, actually, I wanted to make a few comments about Steve. And Steve is always gracious to give his division heads acknowledgement, which they certainly deserve, they did have an outstanding year, but I wanted to, to make some comments about Steve Cirillo, who is, as you know, retiring from a long career in municipal government this spring. It's hard for me to even say that, because I've relied on Steve so much, and will miss him so much. But, in fact, he is, he is leaving, you reminded me again today, he is leaving. And I just want to say that, I don't know, Steve probably doesn't know this, but when I first got into municipal government back in nineteen eighty-one, I had an opportunity to observe Steve, and I think he was with the city of Newton at the time, perhaps.
I was here, actually.
Here, in Brookline, and then went to Newton, and so perhaps it was a few years later. And Steve has evolved into one of the most respected and credible municipal finance officials in the Commonwealth, but also, I think, in the country. And I, the town has been really fortunate to have him here, as, as have I. And the one thing I do want to mention, I think what Steve's legacy, among many things, will be here, and in his career, is his ability to actually take this concept of voluntary payment in lieu of taxes and related payments, and make it happen. And Brookline is way ahead of the curve on our ability to encourage and entice private nonprofit institutions to pay taxes when they don't have to, or pay in lieu of, in lieu of tax payment. We have Boston University, which by far is our largest one, but we have many, many of those, and I think you know that just recently, we approved a very novel agreement with the Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary, which wasn't technically a payment in lieu of taxes, but was something else. And if not for Steve's tenacity and vision, those wouldn't happen. And I just want to say, thank you, Steve, for that, and I'm sure we'll have more opportunities to toot, toot Steve's horn a little bit. He won't do it himself, so I want to have that opportunity to do that tonight.
Yeah, I want to, I want to add, I've, I've worked with Steve, it's, for me, it's been close to nineteen years, because I was on the advisory committee for a number of years before I joined this board.
True.
And you were deputy town administrator at the time, but I, I think one of the tremendous, tremendous assets that you have given to the town is the, the blueprint for the long-range planning. And, yeah, I, I, I think you, we are sorely going to miss you, but you have cert, put a lot of policies into place, a lot of, you know, patterns for how to look at things and, and how to, how to, how to do things that I, I will serve us well. What we will miss is the guy who always has the answer at the tip of his tongue, and when I ask you some obscure financial questions, so, we will, we will definitely miss you. But I, I thank you for your many years of service to this town.
You know, Nancy, most of those answers I make up, so.
Oh, that's not it.
The truth comes out.
Right out of the air.
Oh, okay, well, it shows I'm easily-
I'll also add that you have, you have quite a way of explaining complicated concepts in a very simple way, so that layfolks can really understand what's going on, and, and I'll miss that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think Steve giving us some sense of what the actuaries are doing when they look at things is, is truly amazing, yeah.
Communication is definitely one of your strengths, on a subject which is not always as clear to some of us who sit up here and who sit on the advisory committee, as, as it is to people who have professional expertise in it. I want to thank you and compliment you for your ability to connect somewhat disparate trends and events in town, and allow us to understand what is going on in its totality, and make policy decisions, and to some extent, political decisions about how to proceed.
Thank you.
Incredibly helpful.
I guess I, I'd just like to comment that, first of all, thank you, it's really been a pleasure working here. I also would like to say that it really is, although you're showering me with compliments, it really is a team effort. And all of those issues that you brought and mentioned, there's been a team behind it, a, a large team, being a very qualified team on it. Also, I'd like to say that, in fact, that I've been really fortunate over the years to have a number of mentors. I, I think about when I first started here, in June twentieth, nineteen seventy-nine, and my mentors, of course, were Dick Leary, and Ed Clasby, and Jerry Hayes, and Bill Griffiths, Evelyn Corrane, David Turner. I mean, you couldn't have possibly had better teachers than those individuals. I moved on to Newton, and I had Mayor Mann and Rich Keller, I worked with Rich Keller for nineteen years. And when Rich left, I was fortunate to work with Mel Mel, who's invited me into his inner circle and allowed me to participate, and really made me feel very comfortable about staying, so I, I will miss you all, really will. Thank you.
I will miss you.
Thanks.
How do we follow that?
Take up your, your budget.
Okay, the selectmen's budget, which doesn't follow very well.
Good evening. So the selectmen's budget is pretty much a level-funded budget. The increases that you do see are for normal personnel costs associated with step increases and longevity. The reduction in services of five thousand dollars just reflects the shift of credit card service charges into finance, I hope that Steve covered that during his review. And there's a modest increase in capital, which just reflects the current cost of leased computers.
This is a very straightforward budget.
It's good to see we're being parsimonious, as usual.
Steps at the top.
Any questions or comments? Boy, you're going to get off easy.
Well, we, do we have more to cover? Because I, I think there's also other unclassified, and I don't know if Steve covered debt service or not.
No, he hasn't, and so we're just waiting to see whether Sean Jones is coming up, or if not, you can just keep going.
They were deep in discussion, sometimes in the past, they've come up after their meeting has ended. I'm hopeful that the town council discussion will be shorter than the planning department discussion, which was quite robust. So if you turn to page one thirty-six in your budget book, that is the debt and interest portion of the budget. The, the debt service schedule basically shows that we, next year will be ten million seven hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight, which represents about a one-point-two million, thirteen-point-three percent increase. Then I can go on to unclassified unless-
And that, of course, is due to the fact that we borrowed more.
Correct. And, you know, this morning, the advisory subcommittee met and reviewed this budget as well, and the ramp up into fiscal seventeen next year for outstanding debt includes bringing more of the devotion project on as well.
What kind of interest rate assumptions?
So for, in the outer years, we assume for twenty-five-year term, five percent interest, and then it, it's lower for a ten-year term and a, and a fifteen-year term, so. The, for the unclassified-
What's the devotion, when you go out to permanently bond that, though, that would be a twenty?
Twenty, twenty-five year.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's going to be a level debt service schedule as well. So the, the unclassified section of the budget is on the following page. These are accounts that are pretty standard for, for the town, in terms of the, the out-of-state travel is under the discretion of the town administrator, and generally can fund one or two trips for conferences and training, professional development for department heads. The printing of warrants, town meeting report, these are the budget books, the combined reports, the, the effort that's needed to support town, town meeting. MMA dues, MMA is our lobbying group for, for any statewide issues that we, we need some assistance with, so these are dues for the town specifically. There are individual members that also have dues, which are in the selectmen's budget. For general insurance, David talked about an increase of about three percent for our property insurance that we have. insurance that we have. If there are additional questions about the details on those plans, I can follow up with him as well. Audit and professional services, $92,000 is for the audit, and professional services is for $45,000. So that $7,000 increase that you see is related to the audit. For professional services, we had talked about some of the planning studies that will be funded out of this account and then some of the town administrator's initiatives that he spoke to in his budget message with regards to performance management and diversity as well. The contingency fund, I think you are all familiar with the contingency fund. It basically helps with some of the incidentals that are required of the selectmen in terms of meals for the meetings and then also various expenditures that happen that are kind of one-time in nature. The liability catastrophe fund, this is an appropriation that is recommended based on the fiscal policies, which recommend 1% of prior year net revenue. The increase there that you see of $65,000 is primarily related to prior net revenue increase because of the override fund. So that's why there's growth in that budget as well. The affordable housing trust fund is also based on a formula. When the housing trust fund falls below $5.5 million, an infusion of free cash is also added to the fund after we've covered our reserves and covered the 6% policy under the CIP. The stabilization fund, there's no recommendation for an appropriation because it's at the required level per fiscal policies. And the reserve fund is also based on a 1% of prior year net revenue formula, which 75% would come from the property tax and 25% coming from free cash.
Yeah, most of these are formula-driven, and those policies have served us well. And it's a big reason for our AAA bond rating.
AAA bond rating, exactly.
Questions, comments? You're getting off easy.
I can, I'll check and see if we can send somebody back upstairs. But you can probably.
We can talk about the 40B, 40 Center Street. So let's move on to item 10 on the calendar, the 40 Center Street letter, which has gone through a few revisions. We have in our packet a draft, which, by my review of it, kind of reflects, I think, what we heard last week at the public hearing. Certainly, beyond that, it reflects the comments that I had. I just noticed, I just looked down and noticed a typo.
That's, I did too.
The second line of the second paragraph, March 1, there should be a space.
Page, are we on the first page?
Page 1.
Oh, I think there is a space, it just doesn't. But I'll certainly correct that.
Do you have an old version?
Yeah, I don't think there is a space.
Yeah, you need a space.
It doesn't look good.
If that's the worst of the comments, you're doing pretty good.
And the one I found is one of the bullets isn't lined up.
Selectman Dale.
Yeah, I left you a message. I don't know if you got, because it was very, it's like 5 o'clock. So I apologize. But the only, the thing I, you were talking at one point about the setbacks. And you did say allow for more landscaping, but I thought one of the comments we heard from people and was particularly as to the front setback. And that building kind of coming right out to the street and it being a very busy street that people walk along, and now there's some trees there, and this, it would be for, you know, for a busy pedestrian area, having that building come so close to the sidewalk. I thought that deserved maybe a little mention in and of itself, that when you're talking about setbacks, just an extra sentence to particularly focus on that front setback because I think for the neighborhood, that's a very important one.
Yeah, I'll just mention some of the key points for the viewing audience. We're commenting on tearing down an attractive circuit, 1921 Georgian federal revival-style brick building, which is very attractive, as a violation, if that's the right word, of smart-growth principles, which encourage the reuse of existing structures. We're commenting on the, I think, egregious lack of parking to accommodate the proposed units and suggests that either the parking be increased or the project be scaled back. We're commenting on the massing and the height being inappropriate to the site and requesting that there be increased setbacks and using architectural techniques to reduce the impact of the massing. We're also commenting on the possibility of restricting the tenant pool to people of at least 55 years old because this area in particular is an area that's really suitable for that population, given the availability of shopping right nearby. It's a very walkable neighborhood. And also, it's proximity to the senior center, which is very, very close, only, what, two, three blocks away. Plus, we're commenting on the lack of any usable open space for residents. And I think that's pretty much in line with the comments we heard at the public hearing. Any?
Selectman Green.
Yeah, I just want to note that, make sure you have the right version of this. There are some changes late this afternoon in our packet, the original version.
Right.
The packet that we received, yeah.
I'll just add that one of the other issues, which we don't provide a solution to but ask for more information about, is another issue we heard at the hearing, and that's the issue of traffic and trips generated. It's one of the bullets, I think, on the third page of the letter, where we're asking for a traffic and parking circulation study. So certainly asking for additional information about the impact.
Yes, yes, right, yeah. I see. And we're also asking for shadow study, staking on the lot, stormwater drainage report, a few other odds and ends.
And the only reason I brought it up is it was the topic of some conversation last week. And I want to make sure that everybody who's watching knows that we're not neglecting that important issue.
We're not taking public comment. Any other comments? So any requested changes or is it ready to?
Well, I just request the change that I mentioned a few minutes ago.
Right.
So I'll incorporate those changes and prepare them for your signature Thursday?
Yeah, I'll be around.
Okay, good.
I'm not going to look for any more typos. I'm sure I can find, you always find typos if you look. But I just want to say this is a very, I think, a very good letter. It's clear, it's persuasive. It's not necessarily going to carry the day, but, you know, it's a really good shot.
Thank you. Unfortunately, you may see another one very soon similar to this on 420 Harvard.
Right. And the public hearing for that one is next week?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. And that's the last one that we know of in the immediate pipeline, right?
That's the last one pending before the state at this point.
Right. Wow.
And for those of you who may not know yet, a PEL was issued for 1180 Boylston. So I anticipate an application for a comprehensive permit very soon.
Have there been any changes to the project yet, especially in the parking on that one?
Not that we know of.
Okay. I'll be curious to see how they solve the parking issue there. That parking especially was problematic in that project. Okay, are we done with the, so I guess we have to take a vote. So I'll vote that we execute the letter to mass housing regarding the application of 40 Center Street as.
I think our vote needs to be to authorize you to sign the letter substantially in this form with the suggested changes tonight.
Okay, that sounds like a good motion. Thank you, Selectman Dale. You have that, Kate? All those in favor of Selectman Daley's motion?
Aye.
Selectman Daley. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Is Selectman Heller still here?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any, I'm in the middle of the vote and I'm asking you, do you have any comments that you want to add? I'm sorry.
I'm just pleased that the letter does stress the issue of tearing down of that lovely Georgian building. I think that, I'm hoping that mass housing takes a look at this issue because we're losing our heritage. And I feel that that's very, very unfortunate, that it doesn't meet the smart-growth principle as well. So I hope that something could be done to restore this trend to tear down beautiful structures and replace them with things that are not going to go down in history, let's say it that way. Anyway.
Thank you. And Selectman Green?
Your vote?
Yes. Okay, and Chair votes aye. So we.
I'm sorry, aye.
Yeah. I understood your vote, and I'm sure Kate did too. So thank you, Ms. Seinfeld.
Thank you.
And this is the first stage in a long, first step in a long process. So there's plenty of opportunities down the road to influence the design. Here, we're trying to influence the state's approval, so.
Yeah, but the, everybody who's watching, and I think we have one interested party here in the audience, should keep abreast of when this comes before the zoning board of appeals because that is definitely your opportunity to talk to the specifics of the project and.
What do we want to do? Do we want to do the appointments? Do we want to talk about the advisory committee budget or do we want to wait for them to?
I think, you know.
It's a pretty straightforward budget.
It's actually, yeah.
They're here every Tuesday, so I'm guessing they probably would want to have an opportunity to come up, but.
It's only a 1% increase though, but let's do the appointments first and maybe they'll show up.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, there are two commission boards and commissions up for appointment on the docket this evening. The first is the bottled water study committee. And I know Selectman Green has identified some potential candidates for this committee. There are seven in total, and so I'm going to read them off in the order that I have them.
Can I make a comment? Remember, last meeting, the issue was raised is whether the committee had sufficient diversity. And I was asked to expand the committee to ensure that there's additional diversity. So in addition to the four people who applied, and I think that, you know, this committee can handle the number of public members that we have here, so I accepted all four of those. But also, I added three women. Leah Cohen, who's a local businessperson and who is very interested in this issue and I think would be a very good addition. Jane Gilman, who is involved in environmental issues in town quite intensely and I think would make, again, a very good addition to the committee. And a third person who's kind of new, well, not really new, but Crystal Johnson, who's involved with environmental matters quite extensively. She's an African-American woman. I've met her. And, you know, I think that she would be a good addition to the committee also. So we're talking about seven people, it's a large number, but the way the committee is set up, I think that, you know, can be handled. I talked to Alan Bolson this afternoon. We have a work plan as well as identified people on town staff who can handle compiling data that can be presented to town meeting pursuant to the warrant article. So I think, you know, we're ready to go and I think we have a good outcome.
Okay, Mr. Kleckner.
All right, so I will read this and listen to the vote. Leah Cohen.
Aye.
Andrew Fisher.
Aye.
Jane Gilman.
Aye.
John Harris.
Aye.
Patrick Kessuck.
Aye.
Nate Tucker.
Aye.
Crystal Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. And the board's committee for the camera, surveillance camera oversight committee has one applicant to fill a vacancy, and that would be Hery Chevriat.
Aye.
Call for a vote, Mr. Chevriat. I heard a submission, a number of votes there. So that concludes the board's appointment. I guess I would say that, you know, we'll see if the advisory committee wants to come up. They're here every Tuesday night, little by little, this time of year, so I don't think that's.
Yeah, that is, if they elect, if it becomes difficult to get them here, given that we have concurrent meetings, I would feel comfortable with that particular budget.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's a very straightforward budget.
Yeah, the only issue is whether there's sufficient money for their evening meals.
I think that they've got plenty.
Okay, good. Wouldn't want them to be starving down there.
Right. Okay, that concludes the selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, March 8. Have a great rest of the week.